I'm concerned about having it being deprived earlier in the year, so. You've enhanced pardon?
I said, no problem. Happy to help.
What's a quorum for your, the planning board or?
Yeah, I'm not sure I've heard what you asked, but it's three people out of five.
Okay. So when John gets on, we'll see if we had a back and forth with town council about who actually had to be in session and part of this, and I don't think it got resolved.
Leave everybody from planning board confirm their attendance or expected attendance.
Yeah, Gabe's, Gabe's busy sending out mail, which we just got. And there he is. Hi Jan. I shall call us to order and John also is a full professor, so we'll give him a few minutes. Of course, Jan, you're about to become a professor emeritus.
That's right.
I'm, I'm working on getting the YouTube going. It doesn't like my computer, so I'll get it going as soon as I can.
Okay.
Irv, if you can hear me, there is instructions to call in by phone. You can do that and still have your screen present. If you look at Terry's original email. Kind of gather he's having problems.
Hi John. Terry, do you have that? Is the YouTube link up and running? Okay, so we're, the select boards in session and John, unless if I missed the last communication or the closure of the who is accountable for the hearing between us and Kristen? I'm going to ask Irv to, to put the planning board, call the planning board into session. Makes sense?
Yeah, I think, I think it's unclear. From what I understand, it, our ordinance indicates that it's the select ward, but the statute says it's the planning board. Unless there is no planning board and then it's the, then it's the select ward. But lots of times ordinances, local ordinances will overrule the statute. But usually there's language in there that says, you know, it's X. Unless, unless it's, it's X unless there's a local ordinance that says it's Y, but that language is absent from the statute. So she said it was unclear. So she felt as long as the planning board was here and the select board was here, we were covered.
All right. So Irv, if your audio is working, if you call the planning board into session and if you're still having technical problems, I'll ask Ryan to do that.
I think he's still having technical problems, so I'm gonna go ahead and call the planning board into session at 6:06 PM. We have a quorum with Ryan, Catherine, Irv, Bob Norstrom and myself. Ryan, actually I said that first. Gabe, sorry, Gabe's who I missed. Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan. So I'm going to ask Terry once again, if she can hear me. Is the YouTube link up, running?
No, it's not. It keeps saying grant access and I keep putting in the code that Anna sent me and it's just not cooperating.
Okay, well, that, when I look at the gallery here, this is kind of a classic example of rounding up the usual suspects for, for this hearing, but we shall proceed nonetheless. So there are four articles that are amendments. One is new and one is of historical visit, basically. And so I'd like Jeff to cover the, the articles that the ordinance review committee submitted. And just some background, we chartered or appointed that committee in 2019. And to say that they've done an incredible amount of work over that period is to grossly understate the case. And we also are appreciative of the work that the planning board has done with new membership and over the last nine months really, since we started into COVID and then came out of COVID. So really appreciate all you folks' efforts. So Jeff, I'll, I'll let you choose how you want to attack your agenda.
Okay, well, let, let me give a brief overview of the ORC. Like you said, he charted us in 2019. Our first goal was to put something on the 2020 town meeting agenda that would fix some of the fatal errors in our land use ordinance, as well as correct some or update some specific language that the state had changed and we needed to incorporate it. So from January to basically March, we, we, we did exactly that. We, we concentrated on a very small scale ordinance change for the land use ordinance. And that, and that did go to town meeting when we finally had it and, and was approved. Since then, we've been working on a few things, but our primary objective, we had two primary objectives. One was to take the comprehensive plan, which is now 10 years old, pushing 11, and the recommendations in the comprehensive plan, put them into our, codify them in our land use ordinance. The reason that's important, number one, it was, it was overwhelmingly, the comprehensive plan was that some of the decisions, especially on land use, were overwhelmingly supported by the town via some, some, a large public outreach and some surveys that were done. And, and for us to not incorporate them and make them actual reality was kind of shame on us. But the other thing is that the planning board already has an obligation on any of the permits that they issue, as well as the, the CEO, to, to incorporate things from the, the comprehensive plan to ensure that the comprehensive plan is not being violated by anything, any recommendations or permits that they issue. So, and it makes it very difficult if your land use and your comprehensive plan are, are at cross purposes. So our primary purpose was to take the comprehensive plan and apply the new zoning map that is in the comprehensive plan and, and then make sure that we de-conflicted any of the impacts that that had. And then we also did some, some modificate language updates and some, some minor tweaks. In doing that, we also decided to tackle the shoreline zone. And really the shoreline zone was in pretty good shape. It had been, it had been redone a few years ago. It is a DEP document, pretty much boiler plated by them. But if you lived in the shoreline zone, you had to look at the shoreline zone, figure out what your restrictions and requirements were. Then you had to pull out the land use ordinance and see if there was anything else you had to do. Very difficult for the public to, to be able to navigate that. So we took everything from the land use ordinance that was not in the shoreline zone and we put it into the shoreline zone so that now if you live in the shoreline zone, you can go to one document and it gives you all the processes and restrictions and procedures for whatever it is you need to do in the land, in the shoreline zone. So while we were in the midst of this and, and we were actually plugging along on it bit by bit, we did get asked by the select board to take a look at a couple of other things. One was the planning board ordinance, which has been through a few iterations in the past. It's really tough to hone in on what the real planning board ordinance document is, because there was one on file that didn't match what was in the warrant articles. So, and there were conflicts in it. It, it's established a size and made restrictions on the, on the personnel, the committee members, as well as establishing a, a quorum that was based on the old number, not the new number. So there were a lot of fatal flaws in it. So we took a look at that and, and one of the things we did was try to fix that as best we could. We also were asked to look at what used to be called the naming ordinance, I think is what they used to call it. And our naming ordinance, which was a boilerplate many years ago, it's the E911 naming ordinance. It's for naming roads and what the numbers are on your house. And that process has been accomplished by an individual that the town select board has appointed. Although our ordinance doesn't, doesn't give him any powers, they kind of ignore the individual and, and assumes that the select board does all the stuff that he was doing. So, so we went through and changed it so that the select board names an individual, appoints an individual to be the addressing officer and then gives that individual the powers that used to be in the select boards. We also added a paragraph to, to give, to give anybody who's, whose address changes or the street changes, a process for appealing to the select board. And then the final thing we did was, we knew that the planning board was being faced with some possible solar farms. And so we tried to figure out if we should do a standalone or incorporated in our land use ordinance. We opted to do it as a standalone, but since then the legal has recommended that we incorporate it into the land use. So it's being presented here and I think it's going to be presented right up to just prior to the, to the, to the meeting, to the town meeting as a standalone that will be incorporated in. So that's, that's the bottom line. Land use ordinance, which brought the comprehensive plan in, shoreline zone, which brought land use into it, the planning board ordinance, the solar farm, and then the, the naming ordinance or dressing ordinance, as the case may be. So I can go in whatever amount of detail you want on it, but it might be easier, I would assume, especially with the audience that we've got, that you've already looked at it and you may have some specific questions or recommendations. Typically, typically, public hearings are held and then nothing changes between the public hearing and when it's being voted on. That has not been true traditionally for our ordinances, for our land use ordinances. There have usually been changes and tweaks that go forward. So this, this is there. It is very possible to make changes to what we have publicly put out there between now and the time that it goes to town.
So given that, Gabe, could you take everybody through the, the three items that you sent us mail on? Because I think those, those will end up being changes that would be incorporated into one or more of these, these ordinance, ordinances.
Sure. And that was, I was just reporting back from a recent planning board workshop meeting where the board, the full board met and went through the ordinances just to, you know, make sure that we were all comfortable administering them. We felt that they met the standards that the planning board would expect. And so on. And there were just really three major pieces of feedback that came out of that. The first was in the solar farm ordinance, there was a very minor oversight in the way that the two scales, large and small of solar farm were defined. So just correcting that small oversight to make sure that a solar farm of exactly 20,000 square feet is covered. The second one was just a realization that we've had, as we've taken on a few more complex applications over the past few months, understanding that something like a solar farm or something like a, a larger project that requires a public hearing and that needs public input and that requires a few, a little bit more deliberation, going to be able to be accomplished in a 35 day time period from application to approval. So allowing a little bit more time for the planning board to consider complex projects. And the third one had to do with the new use category of individual private campsite, which came through from the solar, from the shoreline zone ordinance into the, into the land use ordinance. And that had to do with the amount of time that an individual private campsite could be occupied, a piece of property before it would need to be brought to the attention of the code enforcement officer to file a septic disposal plan. And the planning board felt that five days, which is what is currently shown in the ordinance was too short or potentially too restrictive and that that the select board and the ordinance review committee should consider extending that to a seven day or even longer period of time. Those were the three major pieces of feedback.
Jeff? Yeah, I'll, I'll point out that I thought we had changed the greater than and in the, the one that we got from, from legal, it does say or greater than. So 20,000 or greater than. So that one's taken care of. The other one on the 90 days, I'm going to have to research that one before, before we move ahead on changing it. And, and here's the reason, the 35 days and the 30 days, those are not established just for the planning board. They are established for the public who comes to you with a request to, for you to respond in a reasonable amount of time. And there has been case law where, where, where they have established longer time periods and have, have lost because, because they, they didn't do it in a reasonable amount of time. So I, I just want to make sure that we, we don't create an automatic illegal action by extending it beyond the 35. 35 is, is the normal throughout the state. So, and, and, and there are ways to extend it. You can either not have enough information and ask them to, to finish it. So you haven't started the clock until you have an accepted plan, an accepted request for permit. And the other is the two of you can agree on longer time periods since both, since you don't have enough information. And I, and I will, I will remind you that the planning board is not a research organization. Your job is not to go look at the research on it. Your job is to ask the applicant to tell you what the research is on it and that's what you're supposed to consider. So if you don't have the information to make a decision, then it's incumbent upon you to tell the applicant, I don't have enough information on this. So unless you agree to go in longer time period, then I'm, I'm going to have to rule against you. Or making sure that they understand what you need to make your decision. On the last one, I, I have no problem with that at all. That, I think, I think if that's where I think it is, that's just an about five days and, and that's to say that campers that are not there to be camping, that they're just there for storage. It's where you keep your camper during the winter. It doesn't, and you can still use it every once in a while. It's just not a real campsite. That's an about five days, but I'll, I'll take a look at that. I don't think that's a problem to extend that seven days at all.
Thank you, Jeff. Ryan, your Zoom border lit up earlier. Did you have, did you have a question or a statement?
I have comments, but I'm going to wait for others to get through this and make sure we address the public. And I think it was my, probably my dog's barking.
By the way, planning board, last night or Tuesday night, the select board appointed Terry Brackett as interim CEO and LPI. So I, I assume that you guys know him because he's done one of the other jobs for the, for the town in the past. And we're going to continue to search for a new full-time, one or the other. We're not wedded to it being a single, a single position.
So that's effective now immediately?
Yeah. Any other questions or comments?
I do. I don't know if it came up before, but same thing regarding the planning board. I feel, you know, I don't, we didn't include that when we re-did our own review, but since then, things have come up and is it possible to require of an applicant that he notifies at its own expense and with you know, registered mail with receipt that the abutters were notified of the application? And that the application would not be considered complete unless the return receipts are included in the application.
Done.
I, I think. The answer to that is we can make them do that. And that's, in the past, the applicant has been doing the notifications to the abutters. But this time there's a little bit of a to expedite things, we, we kind of took that on to, to make sure it got done. With this, are you talking about the solar farm or all things? Going forward, going forward, I think the practice will be, the applicant will be, you know, doing the notifications and reporting back to us that it's been completed.
I, I would like to see proof that it has been done, so.
Well, I mean, we can answer that at the, you know, the planning board meeting. Certainly can be asked for, yeah. We could, we could state that's how we'd like them to do it.
But I, I don't think just because someone refuses to pick up their return receipt mail that that could stop the whole project. I mean, that's in, in essence, what you'd be giving that person the power to do. I'm not going to sign this and pick it up. Therefore, the application's incomplete. I think it was fine up until Catherine's last three, four words.
Well, that came from a recent events that I read about, about in Lincolnville. And that inspired apparently of their mode of operations. And I find that very wise.
But I, I still think there'd have to be some other mechanism. I, I don't think that someone who refuses to pick up their notice and sign for it could put the whole project on, squash the whole project.
You would be surprised at how many people don't pick up a certified mail if the town has anything to do with it.
Yeah.
I think there's, there's two things. So it's very, regardless of that detail, we do, we don't have administrative capability to do it ourselves. So we need the, the applicant to pick up that notification. But even before that, our rules are not clear about when a notification is required. And it seems to be pretty much at our discretion. We've been, as of late, erring towards requiring that. But it's nowhere in our rules or the ordinance when a but or notification or a radius or however you want to define it is, is actually required.
Dorothy, you had your, you did a technical handout.
Thank you.
Chat.
Are you open to public comment at this point?
Well, yeah.
Okay. I, I didn't know if it's. I've been on high alert for 10 years since, since this came out in the comprehensive plan because I, I was aware of a recommendation at that time that, that passed and I've, and I've been concerned about it ever since and it, and it's now coming up. And Jeff very graciously listened to me chew, chew his ear off the other day about this subject. But I'm very concerned about the recommendation to remove, well, to consolidate everything into a village, including Sprucehead Island. I am, I am a resident, a relatively long-term resident of Sprucehead Island. And, and actually the fact that this has come up now makes me even more concerned. There, there's two things that are, that you're recommending changing. One is, is just in the process of consolidating them, you'll be getting rid of the wording at the beginning that describes, that says this district is to protect the critical freshwater resources and limited land area on Sprucehead Island. When I brought this up to Jeff, who's been around forever and been working on the planning board, he was unaware of this. And that in itself makes, I mean, the fact that planning board members who could be potentially issuing a special exemption to something on, on Sprucehead Island, don't even know. Don't even know that there is a, a critical water issue on Sprucehead Island. It's very, very vulnerable. There are, and, and I'm talking about parts of it that are, that are outside of the shore, the shoreline zoning. District. Um. I, I, Walter, I think it was asked me what the history was. As far as I remember. My history, the, the concern was, um, the old inn that's, that was located where Cliff Daskum's house is, is now. Uh, there was a concern that it was gonna be renovated, um, and, and that the water usage from, from having an inn. An active inn was going to, that, right, that area. I mean, John lives up there. And knows that that is an area that the aquifer is sensitive and vulnerable, um, that down by the harbor. Um, there are families that, that have, Terry knows, um, that couldn't do laundry in the, in the summer. Because for fear of their, their, their wells going dry. Um, where it's, we're very densely populated here. Um, it's a sensitive aquifer. That the lot sizes are small. People are moving in. There are more full-time year-round residents. We have something like four or five large lots, um, you know, acreages that could be commercially developed. And I'm concerned about, and, and the, the recommendation from you guys where apparently you missed the fact that, that, the, the. The current distinction is to, to not allow motels, inns, et cetera, whatever the wording is. Jeff graciously, you know, looked it up and I think he's making a recommendation that in lodges and motels are not allowed on Sprucehead Island. Um, to me, that does not totally satisfy it because. Again, you, if by removing the words, you can have planning board members that don't live on Sprucehead Island, are unaware of the history, are unaware of it's, the sensitivity of, of the island. Um, and could be issuing a, a special exemption for anything. If I remember correctly, and I may be completely off the wall about this one, but I thought I remembered back that, that, that commercial. Uh, development wasn't even allowed on Sprucehead Island, other than. The businesses that are, that are currently grandfathered. Um, so I. I personally am gonna vote against this in the town meeting because, because it just, just his, his footnote about in lodge. And motels not allowed on Sprucehead Island does not satisfy, um, the awareness that I would hope that the planning board in issuing permits would, would be aware of. Um, so thank you for bearing with me.
Comments? Jeff knowledgeable? You, you, you also weighed in with the history, so, uh, you both, um, advanced my store of knowledge. Thank you.
Yeah, in. Philosophically, it, it is a, an area that, that the planning board should consider, but. If you look at the guidance for the, for the planning board on, on doing conditional use, and that's what this, it's no longer special exemptions. It's conditional use. One of the things that they are required to look at and evaluate is the, the quantity and quality of the water. Uh, so, so it's already in the language. If you look at the comprehensive plan as well as the language in the planning board. I mean, in the land use ordinance, it talks about that for the whole area. It doesn't specify the island. Uh, but it does talk about it for the whole area. So, so there's already a requirement for them to do due diligence for it. And, and my fear and one of the reasons that the comprehensive plan said we need to, we need to consolidate some of these is number one, we have too many. And everybody has a story about their backyard or their particular area or something that they want to, want to preserve and protect. Uh, and, and the more of those we get and appease, the more of them we will have popping up. So, so I'm, I'm, I'm against making it a separate zone. Uh, I don't have a problem at all about specifically saying you cannot do a certain thing there. Um, and we can even put language in this portion that talks about, uh, water usage into consideration during, during the, the planning board's. A review, uh, to spa, pay special attention to places like the island. Uh, but, but I, I'm, I'm still against making it a separate. The, the reason for the zones is to say what you can and can't do in a zone. And we've already pretty much covered that in there. That the only thing that was different in the, in that zone and has been different. Has been, has been the ends and the hotels and the motels.
John.
Um, I, I've spent a long time since I've been on the planning board, but can someone remind me where the current island district ends? Is it, is it, um, is it actually, uh, at the big bridge? The new bridge or is, does it include the, does it go all the way back to the causeway by the Hooey Dunks where there's another sense, very sensitive? Um, probably more so than Sprucehead Island itself, uh, sensitive aquifer issues. So I'm just curious.
Yeah, the current one is just the large island, uh, proper. Once you get onto the causeway, that's all shoreline zone. So it isn't covered either by the new village or by the, uh. The old island. It, it is, it goes to the first bridge.
I wanna clarify that. It's part of the Village One Zone and it's a shoreline zone today. So it's part of the same zone that the rest of Sprucehead Village on the mainland is. John.
What is?
The causeway. It's a V-one zone with a shoreline overlay. That's the current status quo.
And that was enacted last year?
No, that's the map that's been around for at least ten years. I don't know when that map was enacted.
Longer, longer, it's been around longer than that.
Okay, so the zone goes back to basically where the low, low-lying area is with, uh, who we live. Is that what you're telling me?
I can share a screen really, well, I can actually, I would, but I can't. Um, if you wanted me to, I could. The host gives me the opportunity, but yeah, essentially. Only the island proper across the bridge is part of the island zone today.
Correct. So it only goes to the bridge.
So it only goes to the big bridge, which is what Jeff said originally.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, so. Uh, so my follow-up question then Jeff would be senses, actually other areas where there's sensitivities that maybe even more important. More sensitive than the island itself. And I'm thinking of the little area around lobster. Um, you know, around the, um, the lobster pound area that, that is really sort of part of the mainland, but. So if you were talking about some sort of overlay zone, which I think in the set, in essence you are, or overlay area, um, that could. Potentially cover other areas that have similar sensitive, um, water issues, potentially. I don't mean time, but.
Yeah, yeah, and, and just to clarify, almost all of those others are covered under shoreline zone. So you don't even go to the land use ordinance to attack it. Well, you do, you, because like he said, um, that particular area is shoreline, but it's also currently village too. And so you have to go to both. And, and one of the changes we're do, recommending now is to take everything out of the shorelands or the land use. That applies to it and put it in shoreline. So that if you're in the shoreline zone, you don't go to the land use ordinance. Use the same procedures and processes though.
So is Seal Cove Road, um. Which is where that, that, um, ten, that. Uh, tenuous aquifer is, is that in the shoreline zone? Cause it's up the hill from the lobster pound.
I'm not sure the entire space would be. There might be some areas that would be beyond two hundred. Is it two hundred feet still?
Two fifty, I think, from the, two fifty.
It happened. Someone would have to go measure it. Um, but, but, but my point is, is, is if you took Jeff's approach to it as if and when other sensitive areas were identified. That might, may or may not be in the shoreline zone, you could, you could incorporate them in without changing, creating new zones.
Right, which out, without changing the maps, which is the, the thing I, once you do the map, you've done the map and. And it takes forever to get that process going as we know from the, uh, from the, the effort to change our shoreline zoning map. Um, and, and so my, that's part of my reluctance. I don't wanna change the map. Um, but we can put in the language right now. That you pay special attention to the drinking aquifer, um, under areas specifically. Um, like the island. And then later on, if there's others identified, you just plot that word next to it and this place and that place. Rather than creating separate zones.
Like, like, where would that language appear?
Uh, it's, it, it's, it's in, uh, where the planning board reviews. For special. For conditional uses. Let me see if I can find it here.
Wouldn't it be under the performance standards?
Yes.
Um, so, um, you don't, you don't have to do a research project, Jeff. So, so, but would you take that on as, uh, part of the turnaround? Between now and, um.
Yeah, not a problem.
Okay, um, but Dorothy's other request is to, uh, is to make Sprucehead Island a separate zone and I, I'm hearing that, uh. Doesn't seem to be an appetite for that, but, um.
Well, and.
I'm not, I'm not smart enough to make a judgment anyway. I'm sorry, who, who spoke?
Uh, I did. And I, and I think that John's suggestion and, and Jeff's willingness to do it actually covers not just spruce. That the issues in Sprucehead Island, but, but other areas. Because I, I mean, as John points out, it's not limited to Sprucehead Island. And it's, and as long as. I, I mean, I think I'm satisfied with, with that as a solution for the, to protect all of the, the aquifer and all ten.
I'd be arguing for your other solution because identifying it as a special area might increase your property values because of the exclusivity that you'd establish.
I, I would argue just the opposite because, uh, you can't, you can't rely on the water, so why do I have to be there?
Okay, John, sorry for the levity.
Yeah, um, yeah, I, um, I agree completely with Dorothy, um, that this is. A major issue out here. I mean, some of my neighbors, uh, routinely run out of water in the summer, routinely. And, and I, and we have ourselves, um, here. Um, so I think whatever we do, it needs to be very, it, it needs to be very, um. Powerful. I mean, really Dorothy's not advocating, unless things have changed more than I thought, that we, that we, um. Uh, create a special zone. She's advocating that we keep a special zone. It, it is a separate zone, I, I believe. But, so, uh, so I guess my point is whatever we do, I think it needs to be very strong and very enforceable. This is my comment. If we're gonna go that route and, and make it a, um, uh, uh, not a separate zone.
Well, and, and John, if I, if I may, um. I appreciate what you're saying because I, I think the conversation that I had with, with Jan and, and Jeff the other day sort of just brought home to me. The fact that people that don't live on Sprucehead Island don't. Don't, may simply not be aware of, of this situation. Um, and, and so if you have a planning board made up of everybody except. People that live on Sprucehead Island, I think that we run a risk. So, so if. So I'm, I'm appreciating what John's saying and I'm hoping that, that you guys can take that into consideration.
Ryan, you've got your hand up.
Yeah, is there any other public comment? I'm gonna make, I, is there?
Yeah, well, this is, this is all about public comment.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, if you're recognizing me, I wanna be recognized as a member of the public and not my role as planning board for my comment. So I'd like the record to reflect that. Um, so. I guess Gabe's summary, uh, is, is correct in, in the sense that I agree that the ordinances are. A significant administrative improvement and, and I can administer them as, as a planning board member. Um, but as a member of the public, um, the land use ordinance specifically, I cannot support. Um, I'm just against the map changes. I'm now have a new reason with Dorothy's concerns. But more broadly, it, I mean. Objectively, it changes a lot of road frontage in the, in the town to not be accessible to commercial or industrial development. I fundamentally believe a town should be a town where you can live and make a living, not just go to bed at night. And it feels to me like the remapping is a gentrification exercise. Um, but developers that are interested in doing housing developments along Westbrook will benefit. Or along Ames Terrace, but there's a lot of landowners that will see significant restrictions. On current or, or future development plans as a result of the mapping. The ordinance revisions themselves are good, but I, I can't support the map. I will oppose it and I'll oppose it publicly at, at the town meeting. And I'll also add, I've not talked to anybody, I wasn't around when the comprehensive plan was done eleven years ago, but. I've not personally talked to anybody that is really in favor of it, that, that's aware of it.
In favor, I'm sorry.
In favor of the remapping, the rezoning specifically.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other comments, suggestions? Moira.
This is on, um, in the land use ordinance concerning junk vehicles. Is this going to be grandfathered or is this the new ordinance with the way it's, it's being written here?
We changed the junk, junkyard. That was changed last year. We haven't changed anything in this one.
So.
Regards that.
If so, someone has more than three vehicles that are not registered, they're not supposed to have it there?
That's been that way for years.
So if someone has five trucks, one bus and one SUV that's been there for ten years. How come nothing's been done?
Talk to the CEO.
I did.
Okay, I, that's all I can tell you. We, we did not change anything regards that. All we did was change some of the definitions last year to match the state's change in how they defined junkyard versus, uh. Automobile graveyard. Um, we did not change any of the rules on that. There is specific state guidance and state permitting that's required for that. Uh, and, and anything beyond, I, yeah, I think three is the right number. Um, is in violation and they need to have a, a permit from the state. Uh, and it's, uh, it's up to the select board and the, and the CEO to enforce it.
Thank you.
I got a question on the comprehensive plan.
Heather, sorry.
Okay, no, but, uh, to me, the way it is, the way it was, the way it proposed. It's, it's gonna, it is very restrictive for business. There's a lot of big lots. You got the ten thousand square foot. Uh, maximum on, on some of these areas. We do have. You know, businesses already in some of these zones that are up and operating. I mean, should they come into the planning board and, and need, uh, a change in their business to expand it or? Or, uh, you know, this, I can see a lot of problematic stuff with, with making these zones more restrictive. And in my understanding that the conscientious plan, that's ma, basically a guide. That's not something that's, uh. Um, I forgot what the wording is in the plan. I was trying to look it up, but it's not, it's not a really a binding thing. So as I, uh. It's something that we try to do, but we don't, we don't have to do it.
Is that correct? Binding when it becomes an ordinance is my understanding.
Right, that, that is technically true. But, but the, what we've shifted in here is, is just the recommendations for zoning. That if you look, if you pull out the land use recommendations out of the comprehensive plan, that's what we pulled into this. Uh, and, and, and that was what was strongly supported by the town. Because we have nowhere for, uh, low-income housing or, um, increased housing. Um, and so there are several items that are addressed by this. But it's true that nothing in the comprehensive plane, plan is binding. But since then, the state has lit, has pushed into everybody's land use and shoreline zone ordinances. Words to the effect that the planning board will consider whether or not. A, an application violates the comprehensive plan. So, so there. So so there is already an obligation to consider the comprehensive plan. Their intent is that you don't allow something to happen that you know the comprehensive plan says you shouldn't do. So that sometime in the future, when you in in you put the comprehensive plan into action. That you aren't automatically creating a conflict. So so there's all, even though it is not binding until it gets moved to an ordinance. There's already language that requires the planning board to consider it when they are issuing a permit.
Versus, let's say, low impact is in is is a phrase used in there. What would, you know, somebody, that's kind of a wide range of things. Somebody could say it's, as long as it doesn't make noise, it's not. You know, not impacting people, but it could be a larger business, low epic, a lower impact business. You know, these are things that's gonna come up.
Well, currently, we don't have a restriction on 10,000 square feet, and that's that's what the comprehensive plan recommends. So that that because that's new language from the comprehensive plan about. Commercial businesses that are greater than 10,000. Right now, we we don't, we don't have any distinguishment. You can put a commercial pretty much anywhere you want to regardless of the size and the comprehensive plan said. You really ought to restrict the size. We never, we have never codified that in the ordinance, and that's one of the things that's in these changes.
I I remember, I read it, yeah.
John?
I I was wondering if if Jeff could review. Change that Ryan is referring to. That's assuming you agree with Ryan, but. But the only one I've heard about is the 10,000 square foot, so I'm not exactly clear on what what these new restrictions are.
It, can I explain to you then, John, how I understand it? And then if I'm incorrect, but I it's in the map. You have to look at the new map.
I I prefer to have Jeff do it as the head of the ordinance committee and then and then I certainly will be willing to listen to your opinion too.
Okay, thank you. Fair enough.
Okay, so the so the comprehensive plan. Only has two pages of recommendations for land use, future land use. And it's based on a very large. Amount of surveys done. 61% felt the town should encourage affordable housing. That's number one. 54% believe the town should encourage the building of nursing and assisted living facilities and apartments and affordable housing for seniors. Nearly 80% of the respondents were in favor of encouraging the preservation and protection of natural and historic resources. 54% of the town year round population felt that the town should protect the hats. Light industrial business and 79% of their residents felt that people should be allowed to have small businesses on their property. So so we have, we have already moved towards that one. The last couple of years, we we changed how we. How we called commercial businesses. In some cases, we we allowed more businesses in their home. And where they are in other cases, we restricted it, but in all cases, we are requiring a commercial business to go to the planning board. To be reviewed before they open the business. Doesn't stop them from doing it. It just means they have to go to them.
And that and that is that opposed to the CEO?
Correct.
Or was it not even required before?
It was not even in a lot of cases, it wasn't even required before.
Okay.
So affordable housing, there were several aspects of the survey that focused on affordable housing affecting all age groups in the town's residents. The majority of town residents were solidly in favor of encouraging affordable housing. So a revision to the land use district diagrams to expand the rural two district along both. Shoreland areas of Westgate, up the West March and including Dublin Road. So so it it takes, it takes areas that used to be R1 and makes makes them now village. And a revision to the land use diagrams to provide for redefining Village One and Two Districts. And combining with the island.
Okay, so just a quick follow up on that then. So by putting them into village extension, that limits their business or in. Opportunity sort of be because this, what's allowed in village extension is from a commercial point of view is more restrictive than an R1.
Correct, but what it does is it changed right now everywhere in town. It's one acre lots. The village extension is a half acre, so it encourages. Apartments, mobile homes, closer, closer community type.
On the one hand, it makes it more liberal, but on the other hand, for presidential purposes, but for commercial purposes, it makes it more restrictive.
Correct.
Okay.
And that that. And industrial purposes, John, there's R1 allows industrial village, extension village and R2 does not. And there's a lot of R1 that gets redone to R2 village extension or village.
Okay, thank you.
Large tracks, you know, on that that are being put into that too from our, my go to R2. I'm looking at the map here now. Well, everything on the shore, put it that way.
I guess the other thing back to the water thing, we have marginal water in the village as well. I think everybody knows that. I'm not for reasons similar to Dorothy, I'm not sure that the aquifer can support half acre. You know, sort of dense, dense in main terms, I'll say. Suburban development along Ames Terrace and Westbrook, Westbrook Street. Maybe it's been studied, maybe it hasn't been. I I don't know.
Yeah, I I don't recall any studies. I the only studies that I recall in the time I've been here have been on the island. And maybe Hayden's Point Road, something in the back of my head. Is that but 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 having said that, just playing the devil's advocate a little bit, I mean, you could get an industrial use that could come in, they could use. Hundred times the water that 10 little apartments are gonna use in, so I, you know, I.
That's true, but most industrial uses will have to do environmental assessments and DEP applications that. Are beyond our ability to review.
Yeah, they're on, yeah, if they're on a certain size, but okay, I'm getting the sense of it. Thank you.
But I will say that since it's a, any commercial endeavor. Has can be conditioned by the by the planning board and you can require that they do. An impact on the the same type of DEP type surveys that that are required by DEP you can require. As a planning board.
And we do the the fillings, for example, DEP requirements have been conditions on. The wedding barn we did, they will be conditions, I'm sure, on the solar farm and and other commercial type applications. And. Yeah. It's just we don't have the resources to do the studies or assess the outcomes, you know, the experts was more my point. So our playbook so far, at least in my experience on the board, has been to require the DEP. Per statute and we don't really weigh in on that other than to say we need them to do it.
I had to unmute, sorry. Have we drained land use, shoreline zoning, road naming? The planning board and. The solar farm ordinance, which as it stands now or is embedded in the land use, have we take accepted that?
Well, we gotta be careful because what she gave us was she took the solar ordinance and embedded it in. The existing land use ordinance.
On purpose.
Right.
She, a benefit of her, she is is town council.
Right. So it it does not. It it is not what we expect to be the finished product. Now, and what she what she's saying is you do it this way and you put the words in the in the article. That if both are accepted, then this gets incorporated into the new one. But I do, I do have one exception with the the small change she made. About permits for small use. That's that's not a legal answer. That's a philosophical answer. And and I leave it to the select board to decide which direction you want to go on this, but I. Right now, we intentionally did not require small, non-commercial. Solar panels to be permitted at all. And the reason for that is because they're doing it all over the place. They put it on their house. They put one panel. They put 30 panels. Doesn't make a difference as long as it's not commercial and it's not huge. And requiring them to to get a permit for each one of those because because they might be installing it wrong. Is not philosophically the direction that I that I think the planning board or the ordinance review committee would go in.
Having gone through that, I agree with that. CMP will not allow you to create a connect the photovoltaic system to the grid. So if it, assuming it's a grid tied system, it will have to meet code and they will review it. It's sort of like the DEP thing.
Yeah, it just adds one more. Layer to an unnecessary requirement, but we do, and and she also put in there that municipal. Solar farms require planning board approval. We had specifically excluded that. So so I do have a few exceptions to how she incorporated it into our existing.
John, Catherine had her hand up, sorry.
Yes, I I did install solar panels on my house and when I did it a few years back. You know, it was made very clear to me that the state. You know, saw them as an appliance, just like a fridge or something else, and therefore we are not subjected to. Any increase in property value as a result and things like that. So and there was no permitting required. And that was the intent so that to make it easy for people to do it, I guess, and because it's a good thing to have solar panels on.
Moira, thank you, Catherine.
I have solar panels as well and revision did my solar and mine's a ground mount. And we went through CMP and also the state in the process, but. As as we filed paperwork last year, we're not to be taxed for. And we filed that to make sure and revision was the one that sent me the email to fill it out and bring it into the town office. Not to be taxed on your solar panels, but. There is a process that revision does through CMP and I'm grid tied with my solar panels and it's all done. Correctly.
John?
I just wanted to point out that the reason, and I think Jeff knows, but for others, the reason that she embedded it in the existing ordinance was. Because it's gonna, contemplating that these would come up as two separate questions and that would, and therefore if one question fails, it doesn't. Kill the other one with it or vice versa. The other, if question A fails, it doesn't kill question B or B fails, it doesn't kill question A. So. Kind of drag, drag it down with it, but I haven't had a chance to review. We just got that this afternoon. From Kristen and I, I tend, my original reaction was that's a policy question, not a legal question, but. But then I thought I saw something about some technical. Matter, but I haven't really had a chance to read it, so. Or study it, so anyways, that's just my comment on that.
Okay, so we need, we need to do our own homework on. The specific warning wording and placement of of those two or one articles. But the clock is ticking. Urban?
Yes, just quick thing for Jeff. I noticed between the old map and the new map, all the land east of Route 73. And all the land west of 131 is mostly is going from R1 to R2. Is that what I'm looking at, Jeff? And I'm wondering what the reason for it because there's some very large tracks on both those sides of those roads. And if somebody wanted to put a bigger business in. I'm I'm wondering the reasoning behind that, I guess, to to make those air, both those areas, you know, more restrictive. I don't know if you know what I'm talking about.
Yeah, I'm looking, I'm trying to find it. You're talking.
All shoreline. It's all from east of Route 73 to the Gig River and then on the other side.
Yeah, and I and I and I don't recall the reasoning behind it, but I do know that there was some specific discussion on it. Right now, R1 is the least restrictive. It would still be the least restrictive. And and R2 has some restrictions to it. It's not commercial other than the greater than 10,000 square feet. Well, no, you're you can do it in R1 and R2, so. No, I take it back. Greater than 10,000, you can't do it on R2. So it wouldn't allow you to put a 10,000 square foot. That's that's about the only real difference in the two that I can pick up right away.
But we have large tracks of land there. That those are huge. There's a lot of huge parcels on both sides that that people could develop. At some point, if we needed it in town. I wonder why we're putting, I don't know if anybody ever would, but it just seems like we have no place now. On either side of the town. In the center.
Yeah, as far as off of 73. And again, I think that I I would have to do some research. My my bet is it has to do with maintaining the. The oceanfront kind of view that you have along there. So if we had a big wall, 10,000 square foot Walmart. Between the water and and 73, I think that would detract from it, so. And and so I suspect that that was the reasoning for. Redoing some of it, although.
When somebody built, somebody came into planning board and said, I want to build three 10,000 foot structures on a 35 acre parcel.
Right, yeah, so right now we're saying. You can do it on R1, you just can't do it in R2. So right now, somebody could come in and put something. Across from the town office in that area. And and this would prohibit him from doing it.
What I'm saying is somebody came in and said that we want to put three 10,000 square foot buildings on one parcel of land. Because we own it or whatever, you know, east or west side of town. I mean. Instead of 30,000 square foot building, could they, you know? What are we looking at? Is it the whole land?
That would be the planning board to just determine that. We we would not, we don't prohibit it. Except it's only allowed in R1.
I think our view, they would have to apply for variance with Board of Appeals. Because it would be a variance at that point.
What what's the variance for?
If we went, if somebody wanted more than 10,000 square feet. Of structure for a principal use, whether it's one roof or multiple, it would be outside of the proposed ordinance, correct?
No. It would be allowed in R1.
That I I said in R2 and the specifically in the specifically in the areas that are being currently R1 and being rezoned. Either R2 village or village extension. That's my, that's the crux of my. Opposition to the map change.
Put them side by side, 10 feet apart, you know what I mean? I'm wondering why we're changing the the district, that's why, what that brought that on. Because it.
John?
I can't speak specifically why, but in in the years that I've been around, there's been a lot and perhaps you dealt with the junkyard issue years ago. And I mean, there's been a lot of. A lot of people are very concerned at. In in what have become residential areas, and I would call that area between the water and. And 131, almost the entire length, a residential area now. That. You know, that you can't all of a sudden plop a junkyard down or right next to someone's, you know, right between. Two houses out there. Two houses out there, and that's been a tension between, over the years, between. You know, a business development versus protecting residential development and, and, and people. People that have built in, is it R one that's the least restrictive?
Yes.
People that have built houses in R one have. Have expressed shock to me over the years that, and maybe you can't do it now, but you could, I've been told a few years ago. That someone could put a junkyard right next to their house.
Or a gravel pit.
Yeah. So, I mean, I think that's a tension that's not going to go away, you know, there's some. And that's a political question that town meeting is going to have to decide and, and I would assume that's sort of the. The driving force behind the surveys, the answers to the surveys when, when the comprehensive plan was done and. That people are viewing this town as a residential town and they want to protect. Its residential character and, and not see it as. A heavy industrial town, although as a practical matter, until there's public water and sewer, it's probably not going to be a heavy industrial. But anyways, I, I, that's just, that's just sort of a history, I think, if you will.
Okay. It'd be interesting to see the census data. Whenever it comes, because. That'll, that should trigger a relook at the comprehensive plan. And. It's kind of interesting, I, I think, somebody once told me that. All you old people, and they were referring to me, all you care about is that the ambulance and the fire department get the maximum amount of budget. Of course, my response was, you're damn right. That, that, the priorities may, may be changing with the demographics, we shall see. Okay, so the last ordinance is the reestablishment of the conservation commission. And. Theo is here and she is part of a group that. Started work, doing some conservation related kinds of work, ecological kinds of work. They, they asked the select board for permission or authorization to do some of that, or at least our concurrence, which we did. And they. Have made some connections with sister or brother organizations around us. And they wanted to be made, they want to be made official. And so various people researched. Conservation commissions and Jan and John. Collaborated and wrote this article that reestablishes. The conservation commission that used to exist. And it's my understanding that that conservation commission came about. For the purposes of securing the grant that built the tennis courts way back in the seventies. And then. It, it lost its steam having achieved its primary objective, so. Theo, I'm going to ask you to describe the. The work that you guys have been doing and what you intend to do as part of this being made official or the ordinance.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the chance to speak to you. Our group came together because we felt that it was important to start. Working to preserve what makes South Thomaston so special in terms of open lands, trails. That things like the Westgig Marsh and to work to keep it clean and work to keep the community involved. We're doing water quality sampling. We had a cleanup for Earth Day, which was. I'm happy to say very successful, but we're handicapped in several ways by not actually being a commission. The first one is that, you know, we are now self-funded. We can't go to anything for a grant. We have no status legally, other than just being a group of concerned citizens. And, you know, by being a commission. We wouldn't have to, you know, contributions made to further conservation issues would be. Funneled through the town, administered by the town, therefore to the donor, they would then be tax deductible. And we wouldn't have to be keeping a little bank account that we fund by turning in refundable bottles and cans. But that aside, the other thing is that every community around us has a conservation commission. And they have an association of conservation commissions. With a lot of resources that would be very valuable to us. The other groups, Al's Head and Thomaston and Rockport and, and St. George have been very welcoming to us and are sharing what they know. And it, it just, it's striking that. In the middle of all these other conservation commissions, that South Thomaston doesn't have one. So we just think that we'd like to be able to continue doing the work. We're not, you know, trying to do anything about. You know, issues that could be. Seen as us trying to tell people what to do with their property. We just want to have the standing to do the work that we want to do with the approval of the town and the status of a commission.
Thanks. I'll turn this over to the audience for questions, comments. Erv.
Yeah, I just want to, what kind of work you, you intend to do?
Well, you know, first, if we're a commission, we're going to act. At the direction of the, the select board. In other words, we're not going to just go off and do stuff, but. The things we have been doing is we've been doing trail maintenance. We are working with Georgia's River Land Trust. And hopefully working with Al's Head. We're looking at the health of the Westgig River. That's our water monitoring project where we. Take water samples, DEP analyzes the data and does a report every year. We're working with this town of Thomaston that very much wants to have a bike path that would go from Thomaston to South Thomaston. For the good of the, the community. So most of these things would be working to allow. Members of our community to get out and walk some, you know, clean trails that we're, we're maintaining. And just mutually. Take care of this whole area. I mean, we're all small communities and if we work together, we've got a lot more clout than if we try to do things independently. Did that answer your question?
Yes, it did. I just kind of wondered, the only places on the Westgig right now is the town landing and the land that. Mr. Fraun has. That's accessible. And myself. Let the public through.
No, no, there's no intention of, of letting the public have access to your land at all.
I already do. I've done it for almost thirty years.
You're talking about the town landing. Everybody has access to that, but.
Everybody has access to that.
The town landing is often very full of trash. And so what our group's been doing is cleanups. We go around and clean up the trash. At the town landing, we're trying to get some trash containers, and I think some of them have been installed. So really basically it's to make the town. Cleaner and more welcoming, living, peak residents have access to, to trails that are in good condition where they can get out and get some recreation.
Moira.
Hi Theo, are you working also with the Main Coast Heritage Trust since they've got. Land here in South Thomaston?
Absolutely, and with Georgia's River Land Trust.
It's the Main Coast Heritage Trust.
Yeah, that one I'm not as familiar with, no.
They have land all, all along the coast of, of the entire state and they're a big organization and they have. Actually, I think Georgia's River co-helps out with them, and so you might want to touch base with them. The other thing is, are you publishing your, the water samples that you've been doing for the last couple of years? Because I don't, I. Nobody gets to see what the health of the water and we haven't seen anything.
Well, that's kind of funny because we, we are under the DEP's volunteer river monitoring program. So our data goes to DEP and they publish it. If you go to the DEP website and look at the Westgig River, you'll see the, the data that's been published there. So no, we don't, we don't publish it, DEP does.
Could perhaps maybe put a, get with Terry and do a link on the town website to make it easier, because. It's an important job that you folks are doing with the, the water monitoring and you should tell everybody what you're doing.
I agree, absolutely. I'll look into that, but yes, anyway, if I will get in touch with Terry and I'll get a link to DEP. Because those reports are there.
Yeah, well, we got, we got a report last year from Wes.
Yeah.
With all that detail. Catherine.
Yes, the whole point would be also education and communication, so. In this day and age, I think having a webpage and I guess if we become an official commission, we can have maybe a page under the town website. And where, you know, exactly that, the, the list of projects can be listed. If people are interested, you know, they can come and volunteer and help. And, you know, a big part is not just maintaining trails, but publicizing the public lands that are available for people. As you said, there is a, you know, Heritage Land Trust, there is the George River Land Trust as well, so all these have resources that the. You know, and that their whole point is for people to enjoy those properties, so. Having maps easily available, downloadable, all this can be done, and if it's easy to find on the town website, I think everybody can benefit from it. And as far as the cleanups are concerned, we are not just a cleaning crew, we are probably, you know, I don't intend to pick up trash after people day after day and day out. My goal is to try to do something to teach people to behave properly and not throw their trash out of their truck and so forth. That's getting pretty sad for me to see that happening day in and day out. I live on Dublin and Dublin every day gets trashed. And that's pretty sad, so. And, you know, I mean, there are whole, what, when I read the proposed ordinance, a concern of mine was the number seven. I don't know if that came up in the town meeting on Tuesday. But why seven people, you know? All other groups in towns are five, I mean, except for the budget committee, which is quite large, you know. You have three selectmen, the planning board is five, the review, ordinance review committee was five, I think. You know, everything, so why seven for conservation? Why, why not five?
I can address that. We discussed that and didn't land anywhere, Catherine. Because, go ahead, John, you lit up.
Well, yeah. Seven is the maximum amount that's allowed by statute and. We, or I, I guess, were under the impression that there were many people interested in being appointed to this commission. More, probably more than seven. So we figured if the enthusiasm is there. The more, the more the better, so to speak, but, but. I mean, but that's, 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 it's not, it could, it could be anywhere between three and five. I always think it's good to have an odd number, but. But I, I think we could always, if we have trouble. Recruiting people after the initial enthusiasm wears off, which always tends to, no offense to anyone, but it does tend to. We could always reduce that number, but at least kicking it off, we thought, you know, get as much energy as possible.
Actually, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Theo.
I got the idea from the, I think it was the St. George Conservation Commission. Who said that, because there was a, a meeting of all the surrounding groups, that. They did five members and two alternates. And the advantage of that is if you have a seven member board, you have to have a quorum of four. But if you have a five member board, you only need a quorum of three. So some of our members are not here all year round and that we had a seven member board and they weren't here, we may have a problem. Getting a quorum, which I think almost happened to Moira the other night. She was waiting for people to show up, so. To, you know, that's, I, I agree with Catherine. I think that a five member board with two alternates is a good structure.
You want us to change the article?
Yes, I would make the motion for that if motion is. I would like to add that, you know, there is a lot of interest and I'm very happy to see that, but. You know, I think the interest is mostly also for people to volunteer. Not everybody wants to have a hat, you know, to wear and so forth, so.
Well, I, I'd be careful here because the statute doesn't allow for alternate members. It allows for associate members that are non-voting. So. I, I'm not ready to jump into that quite that quickly.
Well, I was pleased to hear you say that it could be changed, so.
It would have to be changed, it would have to be changed by town meeting, but.
Yeah.
Oh, it's, it's fungible on an annual basis. Any other questions, comments before John makes his motion?
I just wanted to ask Theo, so first of all, thank you for your efforts. That's fantastic and I very much. Am aware of the trash at the town landing and I've been out there with my own bag. So, two questions, one is. And maybe you can just answer this by directing me into the statute because I haven't read it, but. What are the specific, I guess. Tools or powers that you get when you get legal standing as commission that will help your mission? And then the second question is, how do we resource this commission? To be effective. I know volunteerism is one way, but. You know. Have you thought about that?
Well, yes, actually, and there are grants available. To conservation commissions that are not available to private groups, and right now, we're just a. A group of, of people that, you know, want to do this kind of work and we've been doing it on our own, and as I say, we have no funding. And we can't go to a funding source because we're just a bunch of people, you know, trying to do some good things, but as a commission. Then we would be eligible for grants and so on.
Okay, that's sort of what I expected to hear, so essentially the answer, the first part of my question is. The same as the answer to the first, but the sec, second part, right, which is you can get money if you get the legal standing, right? That's the principal benefit and you, you become eligible for resources that you couldn't get otherwise, or what?
I don't think that's the principal benefit. I think that what Catherine said is true, that we would have access to the website. We would have, be able to join an association of conservation commissions, which is extremely valuable because we can learn from them. And have already, so it, it just. I think the, the main, and also that's, the town's going to see that we have a conservation commission. And that, you know, maybe just think a little bit more about conservation in general. So.
Okay, thank you.
Real quick.
It's Conservation Commission. And I'd be surprised if St. George does them as well. I didn't read your budget last night. Urban?
Yeah, just real quick, I'm in favor. I think it's a great thing. There, they wouldn't be, if able, they would be able to get better, more grants, say, from the state if it was town sanctioned. So you have to, actually you have to be, and there's a woman in Kathleen Layden. At the. MaineGov.com, whatever it is there, she, she'd be a good person to talk to, but she hands out, does a, does a lot of the grants for those types of things. So, but you have to be a town sanctioned group or. Some type of easement or something with the town to, to, to get these grants or apply for them. So they, they do need it.
Thanks.
Yeah.
John.
Someone commented to me, they're not here tonight, that. That the, the ordinance should make it clear that. The commission members and their agents couldn't enter private property without their permission, and, and I think that is a, is a good idea. I, I think there's probably laws that already cover that, trespassing laws and whatnot, but, but it would be a good idea. To put that in the ordinance. It would kind of serve as a reminder. For commission members and, and also I think it might help its chances of passing. If there is opposition. If it's clear in the ordinance that, that commission members don't have the authority to simply walk across someone's land whenever they, they want to. So I, when we get to the second part of the agenda. So I, when we get to the second part of the agenda, discussion of modifications, I intend to make a motion to that effect. And I just wanted to let folks know in case someone had a, had a comment on that, even though it's not in the draft.
Hey. Catherine?
When I read it, I stopped at the wording that said, the commission shall do this and shall do that. You know, is it to be read as a mandate to do these things or more as a guideline of potential activities? You know, there was a long list, yes?
Well, in item four, there's only three things that are shall. And they're all required by the statute.
Okay, so did I read the wrong?
The next, the next list of bullet points is the commission may.
Okay, so I see the version I read, there was only shells. And that's why I was a bit surprised.
Yeah, the only things that are shall says is they'll perform the duties as described at thirty-eight M R S A, section three-two-one, which is the enabling statute. Keep records of its meetings and activities and provide a copy to the town clerk. And if you want to be a town body, that's something you gotta do.
We already do that very well.
Right. And, and make an annual report to the selectman to be published in the annual town report, which I would think that you would want to do. And, but all three of those things are lifted right out of the statute.
Okay.
And everything else is, after that is the commission may.
Is that the version that's on the website?
Yes.
Yeah. And then, and then in appendix A, there's, there's another list of shells, you're right. And those are also, most of those are listed out of.
So this is appendix A that was, yeah.
Yeah, the, the initial bylaws. And, and perhaps, perhaps those could be separated into shells and mayes. We can take a look at that. I can't do that this second, but but I mean, it's like the commission shall conduct a broad educational program. I mean, I suppose that could, that could be a may. The commission may conduct a broad educational program, but.
I'd be more comfortable with a may.
Yeah. Well, we can, we could take a look at, at, that would be simple. There's some things that I think you have to do. And, but but maybe everything here could be a may.
Yep.
Looking at, we could take a look at that.
Thank you.
So now we've jumped ahead to modification, discussion of modifications, I think.
Well, I saw you commenting.
But that, well, that back and forth is, you signed up for a modification, so. But also, before we do that formally, are there any other questions, comments about the conservation commission? Okay. Moira?
I have a question on the ordinance on the addressing. We haven't discussed that. So can I ask a question?
Sure.
Um, I know that this didn't get changed, but I probably have never read it. But my question is, from reading section six, that even numbers are supposed to be on the left side and odd on the right. Is there, was it grandfathered where some number, because on the road I live on, it is not that way. And so my question is, was it a grandfathered because somebody had a number and they're not going to change it?
Wouldn't that depend on your direction of travel?
Well, it's a one-way road going towards the water.
That's true. But you could be coming out of it.
Then I would be, when I would be not in code then.
I think the answer is that it was grandfathered, Moira. I lived up to those roads too. And I think that the original document was enacted in nineteen ninety-six. So many, many places had house numbers before then.
Okay. And then my second question is, about the color, because I, I thought my understanding was that you had green signs with white numbers. And, but in the ordinance, it doesn't declare that. So I was just asking about that. Because I think you sell green and it just says, the color and size will be determined. And so I thought you'd already determined that.
I think there's both blue and green between the white letters that were available at one time. I don't know if we still have the blue. But we had both. And I'm not sure that it makes any difference. I mean, the important thing is that it's the right size letter and that it's a fluorescent sign that's visible to emergency vehicles and so on. I don't, I mean, I, as far as I'm concerned, the color is not an issue.
Okay, thanks.
All right. So Jeff, you have the most modifications. Can you play them back for us?
Yeah, primarily, I'm going to look at the, the three items that the planning board provided to me. I'm going to do a change to the the table of uses to say that you can't build ends hotels or motels on Sprucehead Island. I'm also going to add some verbiage to the, to the I've got it right here. It's paragraph two A, two A B, two B on page eight, where it says specified water supplies or sewage disposal facilities as well. These are things the planning board has to consider. We'll put some stronger language in there that the applicant will detail the impact on aquifers specifically in critical areas like Sprucehead Island. And I think.
Yeah, currently Jeff does say, you know, as well as the impact on the use of the quality, quantity and quality of groundwater available to abutting properties.
Correct. I'm just, I'm just going to make it stronger so that it specifies, so I can put such as the island in there. That's. And I'll, I'll end up doing that in both documents, the the land use ordinance, because that information is also reflected in the shoreline zone. So I'll put the same language in both of them. And to answer the question Moira had, you start counting from the post office away from the post office. So if you're driving away from the post office, odds are on the right, evens are on the left.
We got forced to comply and my wife was not happy about it.
Of course, if you're at the end of the road.
Yes, we are. Okay, so conservation commission. I know that John has an addition to that ordinance that he wants to advance.
Yeah, I'd like to add a section eight that says entry onto property that says, no commission member, town employee, volunteer, contractor, representative, or other agent of the commission or the town shall enter upon private property in performance of the commission's duties without the permission of the property owner or leaseholder for the express purpose, frequency, and duration of the entry. And I'd like to, I'd like to add that as section eight. If you feel that we need to do that in a form of a motion, that's fine.
John, I would propose that we put that in section four in the area that starts with nothing in this section shall be construed to and put a sentence in there that basically forbids entrance to private property without permission. You see what I'm referring to?
I do, I do. I just, I don't feel it, I don't feel it fits as well there. And I also thought it would be good to have it as a separate section, but I'd have to rewrite it because, because it says nothing in the section shall be construed to, you'd have to turn it around into the positive and say to allow people, it doesn't really prohibit it.
I think a section shall be construed to allow people to trespass or to enter private property.
Right, right. But it doesn't prohibit it. It just says there's nothing shall be construed to allow it.
Okay. Happy to glad.
I think the, I think the separate section argument emphasizes the point you made earlier of reducing unnecessary fears about this new thing that we are creating and you know, and says among other things, they're not going to bother you without your permission. So I'd go along with that, that suggestion, John.
And, and I have quickly looked at the bylaws, section one, and I think we, there's no problem at all changing the commission may. Substituting the word may for shall there.
John, I would, I would recommend that if you're going to make it a standalone, and I'm not adverse to that, that we make it a new paragraph five and renumber the paragraph so that it falls underneath the duties and powers of the commission, which is.
That's fine.
As opposed to putting it at the end as a paragraph eight.
Yep, that's fine. And also, my title said entry onto property. That's supposed to be one word, not two words, I believe. I just noticed that. The word onto.
Okay, you want to formalize this with a motion?
I can if you want. I move that we create a new section five entitled entry onto property that reads, no commission member, town employee, volunteer, contractor, representative, or other agent of the commission or the town shall enter upon any private property in performance of commission duties without the permission of the property owner or leaseholder for the express purpose, frequency, the entry, and that we change the word shall to may in section one of the bylaws. Get that, Terry?
Of course you did. Is there a second?
I second it.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, Jan?
Got your eye.
John?
Your eye?
Right side. Now I got to flip back to the agenda. Are there any other modifications before we?
I'm sorry.
Gabe?
I just remembered there was some discussion of whether or not we were going to leave language in the portion of the land use ordinance that will discuss solar farms regarding permitting. And I wanted to make sure we were clear on our approach there. I mean, Catherine spoke to it, but I also agree that it was the goal of the ordinance review committee to not require permits for residential small-scale solar systems. And to speak up in favor of that as well.
Yeah, I, I agree with you a hundred percent. And so we, I just need to resolve that with the select board and and, and legal to make sure that our version that goes into the table is what survives.
John?
Yeah, I philosophically agree with that. But again, I haven't had a chance to read in detail the attorney's letter. And I think there was a more technical reason as well. So that's why I, I didn't think we were going to be able to resolve that tonight.
Right, we just got that this afternoon, so.
And we, the select board will have to finalize these and certify these to the town clerk, all of these ordinances. Next regular meeting, right?
Which is the twenty-fifth. Yes, yeah, twenty-fifth. Okay. So any other further comments? John?
I have a question. I hate to bring this up, but but I'm gonna, do we feel that the changes that are being proposed to the land use ordinance are so substantial that we need to have a second public hearing? I guess my initial reaction is no, but.
And I agree that they're, they're not substantial enough to require a second one, even if we chose to go on that route. The reading we got from MMA last year was there's a requirement to do a public hearing on ordinance changes. There is not a requirement to do two, no matter how many changes you make or what kind. I was surprised by that, but.
The, the counterargument to that is when you give the duck to a chicken, it's not.
Yeah, yeah.
So, but I, but I, I don't think, yeah, but I do think that if we all of a sudden started changing the map again, I'd agree, but.
Yeah, and that was one of the primary reasons I didn't want to go down that path. But because I would consider that to be not just consequential, it would be the, the heart of the we'd have to start from scratch, basically.
The cynic in me says we can have five more hearings and this same group and two or three other people might show up for each of them. And then at town meeting, when they read the articles and went to vote on them, they'd say, nobody ever told me that.
Well, I think the other thing we need to remember too is the only ones that require a public hearing at all are the.
Ordinances.
Yeah, the others, the others, we could change from a chicken to a duck.
All right. Do I get to close the public hearing on my own say-so?
Erv?
Man, this document might have been brought up. It's going to probably come up at our next planning board meeting with the solar farm. The town is, it doesn't apply now, but the state is already making this, the applicants, you know, in the performance standard, you know, put up a bond for the de-commissioning of the solar farm several years down the road. I noticed that the town has a hundred and fifty percent. Would this be, they'd have to have two bonds? If they had a state bond. Which way do we want to go with this? Do you want to have, have somebody, a company put up two bonds? Or is the state bond good enough? What do you, you want the town to be protected and they have a town bond as well for decommissioning? Or whatever it calls.
Yeah, a bond, a bond basically is a bond. So it would, so the states requiring it, we're just making sure that they have it. So that would be, as long as it, as long as it's the hundred and fifty percent. They wouldn't need to.
It'd be one, not two.
Correct.
Okay. Let's go ahead on that.
Dorothy, you got a question?
Well, I'm curious about that because the solar farm, the, the airport is hoping to build, we're getting our own bond for the county.
Yeah, if you think about how the bonds work, the bonds say you, you are putting aside enough money to decommission it. So whether the state holds it or the county holds it or the city holds it, doesn't make any difference. As long as it's held, you, anybody can then say, you haven't decommissioned it, we're going to utilize it. So.
Should it be worded though, Jeff? Should be worded in this ordinance because the way it reads here, the town requires it. Even if they have it with the state. So you might want to look at that wording.
Yeah, I'll, I'll double check it. But, but typically, whoever requires it, the bond is for a specific thing. And so if that thing doesn't get done, the state will require it, or the town will require it, or the county will require it, or or C M P will require it. As long as that bond is set aside for that purpose, shouldn't make a difference.
Okay.
Who will approach that?
Here. That there's only one. If you have one from the state, you don't need one from the town. Type thing. What do you think? I don't know. That can be confusing.
No, we still require it. All they got to do is show us that they've got it.
Okay.
Yeah, personally, I'm not sure. Yeah, I, personally, I'm not sure, a hundred percent sure of that because, I don't know.
It's, 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 it's like insurance. You got insurance.
I know, I know, but who gets paid the insurance? The state or the town?
Well, actually, nobody gets it. Whoever dismantles it gets it. It's not money in your pocket, it's money to dismantle it. It's only going to be dismantled once.
That's true.
But, but that, I mean, you can ask, um, the lawyer if she thinks that wording. I mean, now, I, I was hoping that was one of the things she was going to look at.
Okay, you have seen any ordinance to submit to the town of South Thompson a performance guarantee in the amount of a hundred and fifty percent? Submit, so I guess that would be, if the state has it, as long as we have something.
Yeah, it, it, it's a, it's a guarantee. So, so their bondsman holds the money.
Correct.
Gives to whoever asked for it, yes, we have the money.
Right, so they have to submit proof.
Correct, it's just proof that they've got the money.
Okay. It will come up, so I get to, you know, ask these questions.
John?
Yeah, I think it's a great question. Can I ask a question? Do all solar, commercial solar farms have to go to DP or do they have to be of a certain magnitude?
I do not know the answer to that, but I think they all, at least currently, all of them are going through DEP.
This one is?
Believe the PC and DEP are both involved, but I don't know specifically the statutes, John.
I was almost, I could be wrong, but when I talked to the person at the DEP, I, I, about, you know, there was this notice that said the town of South Thompson had this application from this developer and we didn't. That, uh, she told me that she was surprised that this project, I'm almost positive, but my mind isn't what it used to be, that she was very surprised that this project was the size it was because it was just a little tiny bit over what they needed. Uh, if they just made it a little bit smaller, DEP wouldn't be involved. But I can't recall that for sure. I'll see if I can find her, her and talk to her again.
Okay. So we can close the public hearing. And having done that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn and, and, uh, Erv, you should do the same.
Well, anyone, the plan would to make motion, we adjourn this public hearing on the ordinance review from the planning board.
So moved, Erv.
Any second?
Second.
Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none? We can adjourn from the planning board's side.
I move the select board to adjourn.
Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor, John?
Beer, aye.
Jan?
Audio, aye.
Right, si. Thank you, everyone.
Good night to you all.
Thanks, everyone.
Hi, Christie.